Oh, perf- oh, yeah, no worries. You're good. Thank you. Okay, it is six o'clock. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 21st, at 6:00 PM. Sheri, or can we get a roll call?
Chair Trent.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Chisley absent.
All right, perfect. Judy, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
Happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Lucas, approval of the agenda? Any changes? Anybody have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes? All right. Okay, so this, this time of the meeting is set aside for public communications. Again, this is items not related to anything on tonight's agenda. And I have one card here. I have Steve Quilsey. Again, just general public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm approaching, at this time of the meeting, wearing my hat as the commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post here in Ojai, post number 11461. And as the commander, I'll be the official host for the Memorial Day Observance next Monday at Libby Bowl. And I wanted, in public, to invite everyone to come and have a look. We're going to have the Ventura British Brass Band playing traditional and patriotic music. We have Shanti Kettles, who is a senior at Nordoff, singing the National Anthem. Her father, Marcus, will be singing the Armed Forces medley. Those of you that have been to these things before know this is where he'll sing the signature song of each of our six armed forces, Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, Coast Guard, and Space Force. And if you're in the audience and you wish to stand and honor one of those, then you do so. We also have a speaker this year from Vandenberg Space Force Base. And finally, and not at all least, we will be putting up, the morning of Monday, taking down after the program, around 450 posters honoring Ojai veterans, Ojai Valley veterans, I should say. These are going to be on the chain-link fences around the upper Libby tennis courts. And we invite everyone to come early and stay late, walk around. You might see someone you know. You might see someone's father or grandfather or grandmother. Both my parents were veterans. And so, we invite everyone to come, have a good time, bring your children. It's a good educational experience, and it's good for everybody to understand what the sacrifices are that veterans and their families make, especially those that have died in defense of the country. But we'll be honoring all veterans at the observance on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. All right, Sheri, is there anybody else online for, or online for public comment?
No.
Okay. All right, perfect. So we'll move on to consent items. Thank you. This is for meetings for the past meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes? Nope?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. So we'll move forward with that. Any discussion? No? Yeah, meetings. Yeah. Sheri, can we get a roll call?
Did we get a motion?
Oh, sorry.
I moved to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
All right, now let's vote.
Graham?
Aye.
Bennett?
Aye.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. All right, perfect. Now, moving on to disclosure of site visits, ex parte contacts. I did, I visited the site. I did have a couple ex parte contacts with some residents. That was it.
I visited the site. I've had no ex parte contacts.
I visited the site and had one ex parte contact with a resident there. And I'll tell you more later.
Okay, all right.
No ex parte contacts, haven't had the chance to visit the site yet.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are on to item number two, discussion item. Lucas, I think you've got a PowerPoint presentation for us?
I do. Hold on one second while I pull it up.
This is the Mallory Way Bungalows Project. And again, just for a reminder for the public, this is a discussion item only tonight, just FYI.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and community. My name is Lucas Seibert. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Ojai, been at this position for nearly six years. The item you have before you tonight, as the chair just mentioned, is a proposal at 412 Mallory Way. It's an affordable housing project. As a matter of introduction, I think it's important to note that this project is really being brought forward in light of a settlement agreement that took place. It was referred to as the Bungalows Settlement Agreement. It was part, it was one of four locations approved by City Council in December of 2023. And really specifically, the settlement agreement focused for the bungalows piece, or Mallory Way piece, in, in the areas identified here, which is the mix of deed-restricted, affordable, and market-rate housing, preservation of the existing 25 bungalow units on-site, deed-restricted or deeded public land that would then go to the developer. I'll have visuals for that in the later slides. A dedicated trail through the site. I'll have visuals for that as well. Two-story maximum allowance for any projects proposed at this site, and there's information on that in a minute, as well as existing tenant protections, in addition to what we already have in our code in terms of tenant protections. And then, a limitation on the size of each of these new units, and then a density cap, or a ceiling of 58 units on-site. So in terms of the proposed development, the proposed development, and you'll see visuals in the coming slides, it is 58 units. What I think I, it's important to note tonight, and to make public, is that the, the public land that was identified as a part of the settlement agreement, which is really a Mallory Way paper street, which is about 50 feet in width, about 830 feet in length. I'll have visuals on that in the coming slides. In having conversations early on with the developer, it was identified to, to not have that entire area dedicated for, for, for units. So you'll see in the coming slides and in the packets tonight that there's only a portion of that area that's being, that will end up being deeded. So the, the other half, or about 53 or 47% staying with the developer, will be used for public purpose and remain as public purpose. From an affordability standpoint, as a part of the settlement agreement, there is a dedication for five very low and five moderate. That's a part of the settlement. The building massing, while identified in the settlement agreement for two stories, the proposal being discussed tonight as an import, input piece, is all single-story. Parking, not mentioned in the settlement agreement. I think mentioned, worth mentioning tonight, is 63 parking spaces. In the staff report, I think I identified over 100 parking spaces that would be required if it was a part of a project that was not affordable. But because they can apply density bonus regulations, the 63 parking spaces meet the state density bonus requirements. From a unit standpoint, those units that are being proposed are in between the 500 to 600 square foot. And then the trail connection piece, which I'll have in the coming visual slides, traverses throughout the site from the northeast or the northwest to the southeast of the site. From a location standpoint, and just to kind of highlight the site, there'll be a bigger visual on the, on the coming slides. To your right, you're seeing the address of the proposed project, which is 412 Mallory Way. The zoning for this site is R2. It has a general plan designation of medium-high density. Lot size, as it exists, is 3.58 acres. It'll be larger than that when a portion of that property is deeded over. Roughly four acres in size is what we're kind of calculating at this point. Residential uses, single-family and multifamily surround this site, mainly single-family. From a site background standpoint, and I should preface this with, this, this item was heard before the Historic Preservation Commission in March, so really a little over a month ago. At that meeting, they discussed extensively the Historic Resources Report that was put together by Paige and Turnbull. And overall, really, this project was a part of development by the reins, and that really kind of took place between 1947 and 1949, originally referred to as the Valley Outpost Lodge. The use was a motel in the beginning, but then in the 1980s, it was basically converted over to rentals, which is what you see there today. In the early 2000s, there was a proposal for 30 units as a single-family condo, kind of as a, as a two-story proposal. The majority of the bungalows with that proposal would have been demolished. That project never ended up going through. And instead, we have the proposal that's before us tonight as a part of the settlement agreement. To the right, you're seeing a photo that was taken looking to the north and to the west with the oval-shaped landscaping and, and like this white rock formation dirt oval driveway, motor court format. Fun fact, kind of interesting, something I learned as I was reviewing this, is that the cottages, for the, the majority of the cottages are named after popular racehorses. That's also provided in the Historic Resources Report, put together by the historian. To kind of help frame this, I wanted to identify some of the entryways by foot traffic and, and future entryways or exits. At the north, kind of upper-left corner is Mallory Way and Eucalyptus. That's the main entry that you're seeing currently as today, as it sits today. To the, my bottom left here is the walking path, which takes access off of Raymond and, or Raymond and Libby intersect. And it is a walking path, but really, the width of that road, or paper road, which you'll see here in the coming slides, is about 50 feet in width and about 830 feet in length. On the right is along Eucalyptus. This is the south side of Eucalyptus, and really where the exit piece is being proposed as a part of the proposal. So what is being proposed? This is the site plan, but I want to identify that the site plan's been turned sideways because it's very linear in terms of how it operates. The, it's been kind of color-coordinated or color-coded to kind of give some differentiation here. First to start off is the red. The red is really the trail that exists today. As proposed, the, the trail would continue through the site. It really starts to the northwest of the site, which is really where that paper road, that Mallory Way paper road currently exists, would meander through, and then to the east, and then exit, and continue along cottages among the flowers to the southeast portion of the property. In addition to that, you see that blue area. The blue area is intentional because it is a area that allows for water to flow through the site and continue through cottages. It is a drainage area, and I would note that I know there's been a lot of comments that have come in in regards to whether that is a, an official drainage site, or if it's a creek, if it's, if it's something that needs to be reviewed beyond what we're doing here. And I can just let you know that we're going to work with the designer in terms of any sort of permits that are required to the state. So that, stay tuned on that. I think that's probably the best way to describe that. And then lastly, I wanted to note, all of the yellow highlighted areas are the existing bungalows as they sit on the site currently. Now, within the settlement agreement, I identified the possibility of, of up to four of these units being relocated to accommodate for the density. I can, I can happily report that none of these units are actually being relocated. They've, they're all sitting on the current sites that they're at, right now. And if the architect at the end of the presentation wants to, to go back to this slide, we can certainly do that, Jason. Okay? Thank you. Now, the public land dedication piece also turned sideways. So if I go back here, anything that you're seeing here? Get my cursor here to show up. We're really looking at, this is Mallory Way here. It's really the area to the north, which is moving to the left and beyond, just to give context to what we're talking about here. It's not the entire area of this, of this, of this deeded area, and instead, it's just a portion, about 50 feet in width. Let's go back to this one. As I said before, about 50 feet, 52 feet is what the assessor's identifying, 831 feet. We've already had it surveyed. There are some challeng, there's some potential challenges that we're going to be working through in terms of fencing within this deeded right-of-way area. But I'm happy to report that the orange area that you're seeing here is the area that the developer is wanting to, so everything to the right is where the developer is wanting to continue to develop. So everything to the left would remain with the city. And as I noted before, you saw the photo of Raymond, so you see Raymond to the left there. That's really where it daylights with the foot traffic for that trail. Yep. So, from a design standpoint, I wanted to make note of two pieces here. The first is the existing buildings, which is really the bungalow piece, all single-story, as well as what the modular construction on your right, also single-story. On the left, because it's gone to the Historic Preservation Commission, and because they're also applying for, for two pieces, one is a historic landmark, and the second is a Mills Act, both of those together. The Historic Preservation Commission had recommended approval, moving forward to City Council. So those pieces will be sitting with City Council, and eventually, this project will be, the design piece will be married with that, going to City Council into the future. From a design standpoint here, you're looking at the horizontal siding finish. All that is to remain and really fixed up. The Mills Act piece is what's being used to help facilitate the funding for that. On the right are all modular buildings and modular construction, provided by a company referred to as Samara. I'll let the architect speak more on that, and the designer, and the, the project manager on that as well. So, in terms of what we have tonight, as the chair had just mentioned, there is no decision being requested by staff tonight. Instead, this is a, a discussion, an input session. So certainly, I want, we, we're wanting to hear what you have to say about this proposal. Asking for the commission to receive the presentation by staff, to receive the public information and input, and also, we're looking for input from the commission as well. With no decision, we're asking for continuance of this matter, but not, not date certain. We want to work through some pieces before we come back here for a formal hearing. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. If you have any questions, which I'm sure you do.
Yep.
We can roll through that.
Okay.
So, just like we would with a public hearing, I'd ask if you could ask me questions, or we can just go straight to...
Yeah, I'd like to go to the public first.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Unless you guys have direct questions first. Yeah, okay. All right, cool. All right, we'll move on to public, the present, I'm sorry, the, the public hearing to...
It's not a, it's not a public hearing tonight. It's a discussion.
Open it up to the public.
Public hearing requires certain, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I have Teal Rowe first.
Thank you. Looks like a lot of work. So thanks for all the work, and also, welcome to the new seat. And my request at this point would be to zoom way back on the project through the vision of the entire valley regarding the watershed. I'm concerned about the watershed, seeing the Mallory Way, what's been done there. It seems like complete destruction of the watershed, and I would hope that it wouldn't continue up into this. I mean, I'm sorry, the cottages among the flowers, it's already been done. It's concerning. And I ask that you zoom way back, not just on the site, not, I understand you have to look at only these certain things, but please consider the watershed for the people of Ojai, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, Anita Graham?
Hello, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your service to our community. So I also am concerned about the watershed. It's a very sensitive area, and it extends across both properties at Mallory Way and the cottages among the flowers. Once construction equipment moves in and begins to work, the watershed will be irreveably harmed, and particularly, the area west and northwest of the cottages among the flowers, where this discussion about the creek, which we all consider it a creek, a part of Stewart Canyon Creek, actually, if you look at the, the watershed report stating back to 2005, I think it is. So, you know, this Stewart Canyon, it meanders through the land, and, you know, like I said, the staff report refers to it as surface drainage points, but we really all know it's a creek. So this is a huge footprint print to impose on the landscape. A wildlife corridor also traverses the oak woodland habitat that we're talking about. Oak trees and open space provide a consistent habitat from cottages among the flowers to Mallory Way, connecting next to the open space of the paper street. And then it veers over a little bit to the northwest to another city property that's vacant, that collects a lot of water there. It's all part of the watershed. And then, you know, it comes out at Quail Oaks, and from there, there are multiple pathways up to Los Padres National Forest. So this is a big concern. A lot of critters use this space, and they deserve better. They've been here much, much longer than we have. And I think the increase in density from the project will also have very significant impact on the neighborhood. This is a lot, when you talk about all these buildings, all the parking spaces, all the lighting, all of, you know, the traffic it's going to bring in, coming and going. You know, our dark night skies, this is going to be, because this is kind of a dark area right now. And that's also part of the wildlife corridor, because there are a lot of species, you know, that travel at night, migrate. You know, even, we have mountain lions that come down in there. I mean, they've been seen. We've seen footprints. They've been photographed, and they're reaching endangered species status in the state of California. And you know, Ojai is a border town. We live on the edge of wilderness. And we really have to start paying attention to this because when we hear about species declining due to habitat loss, development, diversions of water, we're a poster child for that. And so I think this is really important, that we really start paying attention to this. I'm a little skeptical about the, that the community would agree that Ojai is a very low-vehicle-travel city, as is stated in the staff report. And, you know, the oak trees are a big concern. We've seen some at cottages among the flowers that excavations have gotten too close to it, impeded on the critical root zone. Then we see issues with the tree, and they ultimately end up being removed. And, you know, the staff report for tonight actually details every tree and how it would be replaced. And that's a little concerning, you know, to acknowledge that all of these trees are at risk with this, with this project. And also, another thing is the incentives seem a little bit excessive. I mean, the ones that are really obvious are the Mills Act, the paper street. It identifies two incentives, which are parking and setbacks, when the actual staff report only says that for the density bonus, one is warranted. So that's another concern, that there's actually too many incentives in there, if, you know, it gets to that stage. So, I just ask you to consider this very closely and think about what Ojai is as a community. When I first moved here about 21 years ago, I have family who lived here their whole life, and they said, "Oh, Ojai's really remote. Why are you going there?" And so, we are remote, and we need to remember what that means, and our responsibility for both the wa, the wildlife, the watershed, and, you know, maintaining this border on the edge of wilderness, that we just do not encroach and push too hard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Fran Geller?
Hello. My name is Fran, and I actually live at the Mallory Way cabins in unit number six. And I have to say that it really is one of the best places I've ever lived. So this is, I have a very special interest in this project. So, and I was going to get up here and just reiterate everything that we all have been emailing you for the past few days, like the watershed, the flooding down the paper street, and the wildlife, and those two little dang cabins that are up near that upper part of the creek that still are too close to that waterway. But instead of that, I'm just going to say, I would just like you to please make, like, good decisions with this, and that would include Mr. Becker. It's, it's such a wonderful place to live, and I understand that the agreement has been made, but little things that would go really far for us would be not smashing us in between all of those new prefabs that are going to be put down between the paper street and what is now like our parking lot. We are going to be surrounded completely by these buildings. I know a lot of us have not moved there to live in a subdivision. We, we moved there and we stay there because of the, the nature, the beauty, and the sense of community that we have there. And that's going to be obliterated with this plan of having that paper street just jammed, and having us jammed in the front, too, with those buildings. Plus, the community uses that walkway. I don't know. It just, I don't know if I'm making any sense. But I just want to say that, please use your humanity, please keep an eye on this project as it's going forward, because things can shift at any moment, as we know, as we saw. Just please think with your, with your hearts as well as with your pragmatic brain. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Leanne Sheel? I think I got your last name right.
You didn't, but it's all right. Leanne's fine. Nobody gets it right. I'm just here because I live on Mallory, and I just had a conversation with Jeff, and, which he's been great. We've talked about a lot of things, but the big concern is that Mallory, just having been repaved and everything, is a pretty small street. So if you park two cars, one on either side, you can barely get a truck through there. So there's not going to be the ingress egress that there normally would be. And also, we have a problem, which I just discussed with Jeff. He said he was going to bring it up with Lucas also, was the fact that we have a problem on West Aliso is we have a real speeding problem. There's a couple of really, you know, offenders that are just consistent, a couple motorcycles and everything, and they go 60, 70 miles an hour. Originally, we had, had a study to do, to put a stop sign in on Mallory and West Aliso. There's one going south, and then we needed one going west towards Ventura, because they just go directly from Kenyatta all the way up to the church. And so, we need some kind of a stop sign. So I had, I brought that up to Jeff. He's going to talk to Lucas about it. And to use Mallory Way and to have the cottages as closely parked as they are, I mean, that's like one per cottage, one parking per cottage. You know, if there are two people living there, even in a studio, you're really underparked. And I know that's the state of California. I know that that's what's mandatory, you know, or what you can get away with or whatever. It just doesn't seem, I mean, to me, parking is king. And if you don't have correct parking, then that impacts people coming to Ojai. Fourth of July weekend, people park from city, you know, from the main street all the way up. the way up, all the way on Mallory Way. They, they come and they park on West Aliso and Mallory and everywhere else, whenever there's a tennis tournament or whatever, people from town that don't, that just come in for the day, don't have a place to park, so they park all the way on our street, 'cause it's easy to walk to town. So, I don't, I think, was there anything else I brought up? I can't remember. I don't know. It's just such a teeny-weeny little street, you know, it's from 19, what, 47 or something like that. So it's not a big two-lane street where we can get some, you know, a grip on all the traffic. So I just suggested maybe a two-story parking structure, which nobody really liked, but, you know, or maybe parking permits, you know, where we can park on our street and, you know, and nobody else can park there during certain hours. Or maybe we leave it open on Fourth of July, and, you know, tennis tournament or whatever, but maybe parking permits for the people on Mallory Way, just to kinda uncongest it, because decongest it, that was not good English, but just kinda decongest it. And I think that it really needs to be, you need to think about what's going to happen. And for sure, you increase the traffic, and there's going to be an accident on West Aliso. So that's just a matter of fact, you know, so.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Quelcy.
Thank you, Chair. It's good to see familiar faces, and it's kind of odd to be on this side of the table after eight years.
Good to have you back.
I wanna start by saying, I like the Beckers and what they do, in general. I think they're doing the best they can to do good for the community, and most importantly, from my point of view, they're doing it with their own money. They're not sitting around waiting for pennies from heaven, or Sacramento, or wherever they come from, to make it possible to do new residential units in this town. But, there is a problem with this development. It may be something you can do something about, it may not, I don't know. The problem is parking, especially, there are, if you could pull up that title page or the plot plan, along that extension, the so-called Paper Street, the extension of Mallory Way, that is currently wilderness, 50-foot-wide wilderness with a walking trail through it, that's gonna have seven residential units stuck in there, and no parking for any of them. Now where are those people gonna park? They're gonna park on Mallory, or they're gonna park where I live, on West Eucalyptus, just down the street, off the bottom of that picture there. I would beg you to do what you can to protect our neighborhood, so that we don't just become a parking lot for 58 residences on this property. I would prefer that you require more onsite parking, but I also recognize that the constantly-evolving state housing law may not make that possible. I don't know. That's something that I think staff needs to research for you. I expect that that's the case, but I would ask that you at least paint red curbs 10 feet either side of our mailboxes, so the post office will deliver our mail. If our streets are lined with parked cars from this development, we're at risk of getting no mail, because the post office trucks will not stop in the middle of the street and thread their way through parked cars to find our mailboxes. Also, I would, as my second beg, if you would please require more bushes, hedge, fence, wall, whatever, along the western edge of that city property that's gonna have seven new residences, so that you can protect us from the noise from those residences in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Brian Akins.
Good evening, good evening, Chair and Commissioners and staff, nice to be here. I'm the historic, on the Historic Preservation Commission, I've been on there 11 years, which means, the five years before Lucas was our Community Development Director, I worked, we worked with three different Community Development Directors, so thank you for sticking around. I want to emphasize some of the comments that Commissioner Craig Walker made, and so I'll mention those. Although I sat for every minute of the four, four-hour council meetings discussing this property, the HPC, and little about the potential historic nature of the Mallory Way cottages were rarely mentioned. I informed the powers that be that we, the HPC, were ready to act on the historical questions, but wouldn't interject ourselves into the long discussions without invitation. And they came to us, when the settlement agreement was put in place, I was worried about an inclusion of the Historic Preservation Commission in that, and fortunately, it was in there, it was brought before us. Let me walk you through the outcome of the discussion with the Historic Preservation Commission meeting on their March 13th meeting. There was a motion made, second motion made, first one was turned down. Commissioner Moore moved, and Commissioner Akins seconded the motion to adopt HPC Resolution 25-01, recommending the City Council approve the landmark designation of the Mallory Way as the City of Ojai Historic Landmark. That passed on a 4-3 vote. Following that, then, once the landmark was taken place, comes the Mills Act. The Commissioner Moore moved, Commissioner Akins seconded the motion to adopt the HPC recommending City Council upon entering into historic property Mills Act Agreement between the City of Ojai and the property owners of Mallory Way. That passed 5-2. Solicited also were some comments that were made by Commissioners in doing that vote. Chair McHattin said, "They look at what is mentioned through the report, that this is the last motor court in the city to consider open space in the center for the visual and emotional feeling when driving through the court to keep the feel of a motor court." Commissioner Walk, "To keep it looking historic in that same area." Commissioner Sims agreed with the other Commissioners to keep the center area open. Commissioner Basachi, "Move the units from the middle and sides somewhere else." So there's, there was a real desire to keep that center part where I think you see those four different buildings, open as it is now, so that people, when they come in, actually go, "Oh, this is the motor court they're talking about," rather than, "This is the development, and I can't figure out where the motor court is." I just wanna close real quick. Craig Walker, "All HPC members agreed that if the central historic courtyard were retained, surrounded by the 25 original units and the rustic rural character of the city, the property would make a fine addition to Ojai's collections of landmarks." Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. And then I've got Mr. Bill Miley.
Hello. The first, I have a couple suggestions and comments. The first one's a little bit fun. How does the term wailing walk fit into the environment? It was in the first part of the administrative report, wailing walk.
A K is missing.
What?
A K is missing, it's a walking.
Well, I'm gonna respond to that, though, wailing walk. The definition I found is, the environment's either wail or weep with wind or rain, and maybe that's true. Or historically, or culturally, they had a cultural significance of grief and sorrow. And some people are really of grief and sorrow now in the town, okay? Anyway, number two. On page 2 of 7, it refers to recent parking studies. Ojai, in my understanding, has never had an official parking study done since the 1990s. So where's that coming from? Three, on page 3 of 7, it refers to lights not being completely shielded. On dark, our dark sky ordinance, I understand, all lights to be shielded are directed down. So what's going on there? Four, the city gave the developers city-owned land, I gather, to ease congestion. What was the value of the land, and what did the city get in return? Five, the parking surfaces should be porous, cross grain. Six, the old cottages have exterior eaves, which provide a relaxed view to hang over the walls. You know, fire embers get in there. The modulators have roofs which end up like horizontal walls, like this, providing views which are, in my opinion, tight and unrelaxed. They do not seem to fit together with the cottage roofs. Either cut the cottage roofs off, or add extensions to the modulators. I like the addition of the patio structures to add space for residents who can go out of doors in a protected screen environment. That's really nice. The climate designs for the roofs. Climate designs call for light-colored roofs, or those that are white, to reflect the heat. Having dark-colored roofs to match the cabins seems like giving away significant climate benefits. And last, regarding the historical landmarking, I agree with Craig Walker about the primary significance being the central courtyard and its original features. I have seen a picture of the original 1947 resort built primarily for returning war veterans. It was a classic recreational resort centered around the court, resort, I should say, and a nice swimming pool. It was themed, in order to receive landmarking status, crafting a new courtyard, one more, to provide recreational features for the residents, would be really important and necessary, and possibly a residential pool and spa. That's what I like. Thanks.
Thank you. Katrina?
Hi, Katrina Schmidt. I live right across the street from the project, on the catty corner of Mallory and Eucalyptus. And I have to say that Jeff Becker and Vem Jonker always do a very, very good job of their projects. I haven't seen one that hasn't been great. So I have faith that this'll work out. But I do have three concerns, mainly. The first one is parking. Being, you know, across the street, I'm very concerned that there's not enough on-street parking, or onsite parking. It's, I think, a huge concern for that neighborhood. Once you go down that neighborhood, you're gonna see, it gets into my second point, which is the architecture of that, of that street. It's really beautiful. It was built, basically, the main houses on that street, there's several Austin Pierpont homes, historic, some estates, some, you know, beautiful curbing, stone curbing, a canopy of street trees. It has a vibe, and it's a good one. And it's one that we wanna keep in Ojai. It's probably the best street in town. I think so. And so, we wanna keep that vibe, we don't want it lined with cars, and we want the architecture to be on point. The cottages are great, the cottages that are done on Aliso, I think it was very sensitively designed, and I'm hoping the same for the cott, or for the bungalows. And I'm not sure that the new prefabs right now hit the mark of being complementary to the historic structures onsite and in the neighborhood. So that's my second point, the architecture and compatibility onsite and with the neighborhood. It's, it's a really beautiful, the, the old Masonic temple is there. Beautiful building, it was converted to a residential home. So we've got a lot going for us. So the, the third point is the trail. We walk that trail every day with our two dogs, so do many other people with their dogs. It's kind of funky right now, I like that they're gonna keep a trail, but right now, it's showing going right in front of people's front yards, or front doors, one, two, three, seven front doors. And we, you know, people have dogs, and the dogs go poop, and we have to pick it up, and this is gonna be right on their front path, or on their, by their front door. It's a little awkward. So I'm, I'm hoping to see a little bit more sensitivity with the trail going through there, that it's more natural like it is now. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Chair, do we have anybody online?
No.
No? Okay. All right. We will move on then to questions for staff. You guys wanna open it up?
Sure.
Okay.
Since parking seems to be one of the major issues, I wonder, Lucas, if you could tell us more about how we arrived at 63 parking places for 58 residences? And is there any flexibility in that?
Is there flex? So, as an affordable housing project, living under the guidelines of density bonus law, it, it has fairly relaxed standards in terms of parking, to the point of a one-to-one ratio for these units, based on the size and the fact that they're really one-bedrooms. So the maximum number of spaces that, or the minimum number of spaces, maximum number of spaces that would be required for this project would be 58. They're providing 63, so they're accounting for really five guest parking spaces in each of those units accommodating one, one parking space. There could be a conversation offline, in terms of where additional parking could go, but it's not required for them, at this point. It's, it's a conversation we can have offline, though, but there's no guarantees.
And that parking is concrete? Parking spaces are?
It doesn't identify the material by which these parking spaces are to be provided. However, anytime that you're providing any sort of guest parking spaces, you are required to provide ADA spaces as a guest parking space. So they would have to provide some sort of ADA parking space somewhere onsite, so. And that would have to be concreted in meeting all building code standards.
Okay, ADA requires the?
Yes.
Okay. Is limiting the residence to one car legal?
That's an Alex question.
Well, he's right on it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not aware of any state law that allows the city to limit residents to the number of vehicles. Residents are free to purchase as many vehicles as they want. Would, would that be like a condition, that's like a deed restriction on the property you're thinking?
Uh, yes. I was referring in my mind back to a proposal that I believe we had on, from Montgomery Street, but it's probably just a discussion.
It was a discussion, I do remember that, that discussion. And so there's, there's two, there's two documents that are gonna end up coming out of this. One is gonna be an affordable housing agreement, as it, as it relates to the ins and outs of how affordability will be matched in, in placing those individuals in homes, and ensuring that they maintain that status. And then there is, and there could be potentially CCNRs attached to this. However, because it's not a subdivision, not required for something like this. It's, I'm a little bit wary as to whether or not you can go as far as to restrict the number of parking spaces per unit. I'm not aware of any rules that, that we could impose on something like this.
I'm not aware of any, I'm not even aware of another example from any agency we've worked with that limited the number of cars per resident.
Well, I, I, not on, not on a affordable housing agreement, I haven't seen it there, but I have seen it when, when applying CCNRs. It's been folded into that.
Are you aware of how many people, how many residents currently reside in each of the 25 units that are being kept?
I think that's a question for, for the applicant.
Okay.
They can, they, they're, they're monitoring and keeping apprised of the tenant.
I, I assume that you'll have other questions about parking, maybe we should finish that conversation before I go on to different subjects?
Yeah, no, I've got, I've got some different items, too. But let you guys go first.
Just on the same thread of parking and... just on the same thread of parking and the requirements that go along with that. And even to the point of, let's see, there was a question. Oh, very, very low vehicle travel and how that operates. It's not a parking study per se. You're right. There's been parking studies done for the downtown district. That's a parking study that, it's a full evaluation. These parking studies were, or parking analysis were a little bit different. Were project-specific, but also looked at the valley as a whole. So there was a whole analysis that was produced and generated. And for the affordable housing projects that have been brought forward that required that, both of those studies showed this area and more specifically this city. So it's consistent, at least with these two studies, that it fits into the very low vehicle miles traveled category. And it fits into it not by like, by a lot. Like it's, it, it's very profound to see what the threshold is versus what we are. Something like fifteen, we're at nine. So we're well, well within the, the parameters of fitting into that category.
When was that study done?
So there was one that was done for, and this was required as a part of the overlays for two other projects. Was on Bryant Street, one was on East Ojai Avenue, so. Both of those required as a part of the application process.
Right, okay. Anything on the west side of town?
No.
No.
No. No, there's no overlays that would have been required, that would have required it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have, I have, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to limit it to parking right now.
I have a parking, I have a parking question.
Developer and architect here, we can ask questions for them as well.
And this is, I don't know, coming, the output of this session, the, the takeaway from this session is going to, is going to be, since we're not voting on anything, is gonna be a bunch of impressions which the developer and, and architect and site owner or operator are going to have coming out of this and see if there are modifications which can deal with the issues that are raised tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, this is input. So if there's concerns raised and there's, and those are, those are ones that we can work with the developer on, then we will.
I don't know how far we can go in terms of impressions, but if the requirement is fifty-eight parking spaces and there's sixty-three in the plan, can the additional five be guest parking? And can the individual unit occupiers get a certain number of guest passes to give out to their guests? And it would be required that the overage not, well, be managed by the people who live in the community and, and done with a permitted number of these guest passes? And can, will, they'll be named parking spaces per cottage or per unit? So that, you know, there's one parking space for each one and it's a specific parking space.
So you're asking whether or not we can legally place conditions?
Yes. Well, yeah, I'm not, it's not a question of whether we can place conditions or not, but is that?
That are specific to say, hey, this unit is only allowed one parking space.
Right, and it's the, you know, it's sea biscuit or whatever the, you know.
Given, given that they're, that they're following under the, the guidelines and regulations that exist under density bonus law.
And then, and then there's someplace where there are five parking spaces and that's where all the guest parking goes. And each unit holder gets, you know, maybe ten guest passes a quarter or something like that.
I mean, we can look into that. The, the only concern that I have there is I've seen it, again, with CCNRs, but I haven't necessarily seen it either through conditions of approval or through the affordable housing agreement. So I think it's something that can, I can talk to legal offline to see if there's any other examples where we could, we could look at that.
I've seen it in, I've seen.
About it, but I, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit weary of it, only because it's, it's a, there are there are specific standards that are, that are built into the density bonus piece. And stepping on those toes and potentially shining a, a light on the city on this particular project or even an affordable housing project doesn't necessarily bode well. I, we can look into it though. I can get you a comment.
Put a pin in this and I, and we could discuss it offline, but I just, I do, I do think it's worth.
Piece, it's worth looking into.
And I know that it's done in Los Angeles. I know someone who has an apartment in Los Angeles and they get a parking permit because it's permits required. And they also are given a certain number of guest permits per quarter, month, or semi-annually, or whatever it is.
LA has, yeah, I, the question then with those is, did LA impose those or were those self-imposed by each of the?
No, this is LA imposed.
LA?
Yeah, because it's, it's on a public street. It's not a, it's not a private development. My other comments are about other topics.
Okay.
Can I speak to the, there was another piece to the parking that I wanted to talk to, speak to specifically that was brought up. Incentive versus what's, what's just allowed. And so, just as a historical piece, parking in general was, any project that came forward and had a density bonus with affordability tied to it, it was an incentive. It was something that you saw across the board. Density bonus law changed twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. There was a lot of changes that took place during that time. And, and at that time, that was taken off the board. It just identified the parking standards as they exist based on unit size. So when that took place, it took the incentive opportunity off the table in terms of, oh, you've gotta ask for this quid, quid pro quo, pro, right? You gotta ask for this in order to, to, to be able to move forward with this project. Instead, you provide zero to one, this is your parking standard, right? You're providing a density bonus, you're providing affordable housing. Those are the matrix now, moving forward. Not affordable, then obviously you're held to our standards. So in the staff report, I specifically put in there what the standards are as they exist as a for, as not as affordable housing, but just as multifamily. We just don't see affordable hous- like multifamily projects coming forward that don't have affordable housing tied to it. So.
Not on parking?
Not on parking?
Okay, just for clarification then, because of the affordable housing laws, obviously our code mentions that this, we need to have a hundred and sixteen parking spots. The proposal's for sixty-three. So that is, that's basically state law outlining that developers going above and beyond, providing a little extra more. State law says it could be like fifty-eight, right? Fifty-eight parking, something like that.
Correct.
Yeah. Developers going above and beyond, providing a little bit more. And I don't know where state law goes with, with, with affordable housing and parking, but it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of wiggle room around that as far as the cities are concerned.
So in terms of us having teeth, we're very gummy when it comes down to housing or when it comes down to the parking situation.
Correct. Got it.
We had a little bit more leverage when, is it incentive? Because then we can negotiate the number of spaces, location.
Sure.
Covered versus uncovered.
This is not an incentive.
Yeah, not an incentive anymore. Can I still have the conversation with the developer offline?
For sure.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
No guarantees with that though.
Yeah.
And just for my own understanding, why is it being limited down to fifty-eight under state law? My understanding is there's only gonna be ten dedicated affordable units. I would assume you would adjust the parking in accordance with the percentage of affordable units or the number of affordable units, which would drop that from a hundred and sixteen, you know, if you're only getting one parking space for each unit, right? So this is, just from my own understanding.
So, so thank you for the question, Commissioner, and probably better for the public too to understand exactly how density bonus works. So to qualify for a density bonus or the benefits of density bonus law, you need to meet a certain threshold of affordability. Let's just say five percent or ten percent of very low or low income, right? Once.
What is the, the percentage that you have to meet?
The, so there are different minimum percentages for different levels of affordability. I believe it's ten percent for low, which this project has low. So if ten percent of your project.
This project is very low.
It's very low too. Doesn't it also have low?
Very low and moderate.
Very low and moderate.
But it's only five units that are very low, fifty-eight units, so that'd be less than ten percent.
And, and I, and I believe under density bonus law, and I'll check right now to confirm this point, government code section six, five, nine, one, five, that's the code section, lists the, for density bonus law, lists the thresholds. And I believe it's five percent for very low. So if your project hits five percent of the units in the total project at very low, that means density bonus law's triggered. Now, if you get density bonus law triggered, you get four benefits. One of them is a density bonus, so increased density, so you, you get more units. And that's a sliding scale. The more affordability you get, the more available units you get, more density. The second is this discussion around incentives and concessions, sliding scale. The more affordability you get, the more incentives and concessions you get. The third one is a waiver of certain development standards, which is unlimited. It's, there's, it's not a sliding scale. It's just to accommodate the project, you can waive certain development standards. And then the last one, which is a topic that you guys are talking about right now, is a revised parking ratio. The state has come up with a formula and it's in the code, so we could review it if you'd like later. And in the code it says, if your project benefits from density bonus law, this new parking ratio trumps whatever your local ratio is. And, and that's why we're having this conversation about hundred versus fifty-eight.
It'd be awesome in, you know, our next breakdown that you provide to the commission, if the planning department could help give us a summary of that and help us understand what that breakdown is based on what Alex just, just explained, yeah.
So Alex and I, hmm, almost a year and a half ago, did a four-hour.
We did.
Housing unpacking. And that was in October, I wanna say. From a year ago, a little over a year ago. I would say start there. I can, I can send you that link as.
Sure.
Look. It's, it's one of those where you probably do it in bites, but it really does break down the conversation, just one of the pieces of the conversation. Density, uh, uh, just really kind of, all of the different rules and regulations that are just on top of each other that all apply at various times. It helps to kind of understand the, the, just the craziness of how some of these laws are in place and, and are impactful to the communities.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah, it'd also be good for the general public to review that again.
Yeah, it was what I was bolstering when these projects, the first three were coming forward, or the first two were coming forward almost a year ago. We're not, I was saying, basically making statements like, we're not gonna talk about these things, watch the four-hour meeting, get caught up with what everybody else has already been a party to. I'd invite you to do the same thing, but we can also talk online in terms of some of those pieces. And I can certainly include that in the staff report in the future.
Yeah, thanks.
For sure.
Yeah, I wanted to just call out, so on page six of the staff report, there's, you kind of outlined the Housing Accountability Act. I think it's that second paragraph. Basically says for a housing development project for very low, low or moderate income households, which I think this project qualifies as, or an emergency shelter, a local agency shall not disprove the housing development project or emergency shelter or condition approval in that matter that renders the housing development project or emergency shelter infeasible, including design review standards, et cetera. But I just wanted to call that out.
It's an important piece. I mean, it is.
It's an important piece.
It's a, it's a highlighted piece. It's generally, it's generally spoken. So it's, it's calling out, if you go too far, you potentially run into, to a roadblock. The question is, is how far? So when we're asking the question on whether we can limit each unit and, and place those types of restrictions, maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
It, it runs into that, the question of, of what we're talking about here.
And to the, and to Commissioner Graham's question about the, the minimum thresholds. So the minimum thresholds for each of the affordability levels is ten percent for low gets you a twenty percent density bonus. Five percent for very low gets you a twenty percent density bonus. And and the threshold for moderate is also ten percent. At moderate gives you a five percent density bonus. So those are the minimum thresholds.
Yeah, I can't fault the applicant for taking advantage of the system. But whoever voted that or authored that bill, terrible. Yeah. San Francisco, yeah, yeah.
Do you, do we still have questions on parking?
Not on parking.
Not on parking, okay. Did we want to have questions for the developer or architect? Because I have a few, but I wanted to see if you guys had some.
I don't care.
Okay.
You go.
You wanna come on up, Mr. Becker? Thanks. Yeah, both would be perfect. Yeah, there you go. Dual. I like it. So I wanted to keep on the theme of parking. So we just talked about what we, you know, the city and, you know, kind of some of the stuff that we're faced against. Obviously, you just heard from the public and that's obviously a big concern. And one of my, one of my concerns when I first saw this was the paper trail. Big concern is safety of those folks that would be in those cottages. Obviously, they're just gonna have a, it looks like a walking trail or a bike trail to wherever their car might be parked. If we do, heaven forbid, have a fire, which could be just a matter of when, how are the, how are, how was the plans to help remove those folks? Or is there any sort of plan to address that?
Yeah, we're not quite there yet on that, on the evacuation. We're, you know, we're, this came out of a, a lot of years.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
A lot of battles. You guys probably read about it.
Yes.
The allocations for affordability were all mixed up with other projects. And, you know, some folks love it, some folks don't. I'm not even sure we like it, frankly. But we're here. I mean, we had another project approved, which we spent a lot of years on. And neighbors had different opinions of that. It was much smaller.
No, I do commend you. It's hard to get affordable housing built in the city, for sure.
Well, let's just say any kind of projects. We don't need to say whether it's residential or commercial. It's any projects. But first, we've got sixty-six spaces, so, you know, I know that doesn't solve anything, but it's, it's sixty-three plus three handicap spaces.
Yeah.
So that's one thing. How we tackle those or how we came up with those has been difficult. Because we wanted to try and keep single-story structures.
Right.
Versus doing the two-story concept because we heard from neighbors.
Right.
And it just didn't seem like it fit there. I mean, my partner Vim, who's here, was fine with two-story buildings. I wasn't, me personally. And so we kind of, we kind of figured, okay, let's try to make, you know, single-story units there. The prefabs, in my view, are the best way to go. And I would also invite any of you guys to come take a look at some of the units. There's one in Thousand Oaks at the Los Robles Rehab Center.
Jeff, are those, are those units placed on a cement slab?
There's different anchoring systems, but yeah, you can either do gray beams, stem walls, or there's even a, a pinning system that they just came out with, which I'm looking at right now, actually. Which is kind of a interesting deal with these massive kind of spikes almost that are interconnected. So they're really high quality. They are not junky. You know, some of the HPC members are here. You know, new, new additions to projects, and we've worked on a lot of historic buildings. They wanted to look different. So you don't really want to carbon copy what you got there. So these are, they kind of fit. They're bungalows. They're well-made. We went to the factory, flew and went and checked out it. And we checked out a lot of different prefab companies. So, you know, I'm very comfortable with them. I think, I think they'll fit well in Ojai. So, you know, it's just difficult because we're, we're trying to meet the numbers.
Sure.
Get them on the site and make it all work. And it's, you know, this is not our first design. I mean, that's why you didn't see us last year. We were trying to figure out how to, how to make the whole thing work with all the different variables that are involved. So.
And, and going back to the parking, have you guys figured out kind of, you know, how the traffic flow? I mean, I noticed that on the proposal, you've got, you had two entries, or it looks like an entry and an exit on Mallory. You've got, it looks like an exit point on Summer.
Right.
And then Eucalyptus looks like a walking path.
Right.
So obviously, the neighborhood's gonna be impacted. Um, so obviously, the neighborhood's gonna be impacted, cause this is, I mean, this is an increase of density of over a hundred percent. So they're, they're gonna feel it.
Yes.
Um, so I'm just curious on, what are ways that we can potentially, you know, work, or that you can work with the city to try to mitigate some of those impacts? I mean, I'm just curious if you guys have thought through that yet, or if that's just brand new.
We definitely looked at the exiting, we were, uh, considering, uh, whether to have an exit on Eucalyptus. The, the issue there is the existing cottage and the existing kind of garage storage building, which we're actually gonna modify.
Mm-hmm.
We're proposing to modify to three units.
Okay.
It's, it's super narrow there.
Right.
So it's a little bit tough.
It'd be hard to get out there.
Yeah, it's kinda tough to get out that direction, we, we would need to, uh, probably tear down the garage building.
Okay.
To make it work.
Are you still thinking of doing that, though, or are you gonna leave it?
At present, the design just has the walking path out.
Just the walking path, okay.
Which exists now, actually.
Alright, okay.
Um, so, you know, there, the, uh, comments at HPC regarding the kind of the central, central courtyard area, you know, that area, um, are, the only way to really modify that, in my view, is to go two stories with certain areas.
Right.
Jeff, do you know how many people live in the twenty-five current bungalows?
Um, you know, one, you really can't ask that, by the way, anymore.
Alright, let's see.
There's a lot of rules that are coming on.
What else might we go at this?
Based on what we, we believe, it's, it's probably around forty to forty-five, I'm thinking, somewhere.
So basically, you are finding two people living, roughly.
Yeah.
And do you anticipate the same for the, uh, new bungalows?
Um, I think the new bungalows, we have, uh, I think seven studios, as I remember, and the balance are one bedrooms. So, you know, yeah, it's gonna be a mix of that, probably, you might have some individuals, but then you're gonna have some couples.
I, I'm trying to ascertain the relationship between the number of people who will live in this project and the, the cars that will arrive. So, that's why I'm pushing on this. Subject, I'm not supposed to push on.
Yeah, the reality is that it's gonna be a lot more people
Oh, yeah.
than for the sixty-three spaces, or sixty-six spaces, and we just need to have conversations about that and figure out what works. My question to you is about these ten affordable units. Um, which units will be deemed affordable, is it, is it gonna be all the studios and three-one bedrooms, or how are you going to split this out?
Mix that up. Well, typically, it's kind of a, um, a mixing of different unit types, so you might get some of the units that are there now that get redone, that would be designated. But that, that tends to be our experience with other cities, is they want a mixture of the, of the different types of units.
As someone who has, you know, a young family, I think about all the young families that are here in Ojai, and you know, making sure that we have affordable ha- housing that meets, you know, the expectations and needs of our, our families here. That would be really nice to have that be spread amongst all the different units, rather than just the studios and.
Right. And, and I would also mention that, uh, existing tenants that are there in, in some of the units now may already qualify for some of those
That's true.
levels, and they would get priority under our agreement.
Agreement, yeah.
Yeah, they would definitely get priority, so that, that may dictate certain units are already, you know, uh, reserved.
And Commissioner Graham, just, just FYI, density bonus law mandates that the unit mix be mixed, so you can't have all your lowest value units be affordable, it has to be a mix of the project.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Jeff, um, on the color schemes that you're presenting for the new bungalows, um, I can see why you selected them, they're, they're dark and they just kind of fit in to the scene, but um, someone mentioned dark roofs not being the greatest thing for the climate. Is there anything about this dark roof that would show up that would insulate it from absorbing heat, or would you be amenable to lightening that roof color?
So there's, uh, the Samara units, there's different color options. And, um, along with siding options, we, uh, like the Kingspan, which is a metal system. It's really heavy-duty, and, I mean, I'd love to have you guys take a look at them. Cause I think you'd make the same decisions we.
We, we would like to look at them also.
But, um, the, the roof systems are all metal, um, by nature, so, I mean, we, we just liked the color choices we picked. Uh, cause we thought they'd fit best and kind of blend in. Um, so, that was just our, our decision. And, uh, a number of these units are also gonna have solar arrays. So I, I'm not, you know, we, we probably do wanna have the sun beating down on them. Some of the units will not, because we have tree coverage, and it doesn't make sense, but.
Um, and you're gonna refurbish some of the existing units, I believe, right?
Yeah, ultimately, we're gonna refurbish all of them.
All of them.
Uh, but we can't do those until somebody wants to vacate or something.
Sure.
Go in and do it.
Got it.
Although we, we do, I will point out, we have to, we have to bring in all-new infrastructure. I mean, this place is vintage.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it, it does bring up a couple other questions, and I, I do have a question for Lucas on it too, but, um, with, uh, obviously, fire is a big concern. Um, have you guys looked at, like, fire-hardening practices around what you could do with the new units coming in, and as well as retrofitting the existing units?
Yeah, Bill Mellett's here, who's the landscape architect, and I know that our, our designs meet the whole fire-hardening, fire-wise programs, which is, you know, not exactly beautiful, by the way, you know, uh, can't plant within.
But necessary.
Yeah, but necessary, so, yeah, Bill can speak to that, if you'd like him to come up and.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, actually, I'd, we'd like, I'd like to talk also too about the, the creek and the flow of, of the creek, how that, how you guys are planning to, to set that, or.
So, if I could, I know there's been a lot of public comments coming in on that. Um, I've already reached out to Fish and Wildlife to kind of just get like a preliminary understanding. I've gotten responses from the, the representatives from our district. And so it, it seems like, well, I'm not really sure if we're required to do it, I'm not really sure if we're not required to do it, but I do know that we're working with them to understand when it qualifies and when it doesn't, so. If it is required, I've already talked to Jeff about it, and, and obviously, he's gonna go through the process, but if it's not required, we'll be identifying why it's not required, so it's, it's on the fence right now in terms of its requirement.
It's part of an environmental, or like the engineering assessment, right, like doing the land assessment?
Sure, right, I think there's a couple other pieces involved in that.
Okay.
Um, that we're working through right now.
Alright, I just wanna make sure that these folks don't get flooded out when there's a big storm.
Right.
Yeah, that would be bad.
Right, cause it, it exists currently.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Right, it's a bunch of comments.
Oh, for, for staff, or for?
Well, for both.
For both? Well, while, while the, while the developers share, let's continue, yeah, go ahead.
Um, let me start by saying what a wonderful sight you have. I took a walk over the weekend through it, I was with someone, and I was describing, cause I'd read the, the presentations and seen the maps, and I said, this is a place where we're gonna add density to the existing site. Uh, and some of the, um, housing will be affordable housing, but some of it remaining will be market rate, although, um, the market rate for these kinds of, um, units is relatively reasonable in terms of other pricing for units in the community. And I said, you know, I think this will be come, although it's a, I know it's a term, a legal term, um, workforce housing, but I think this is where this is where the workforce of Ojai will be living, and, uh, and he said, you mean like the people who work in the restaurants? And I said, yeah, I guess, and we, we're walking down Eucalyptus from the, um, from the east, and we pull back the, the chain-link fence that says, do not trespass, and walk in. And a guy walks by, and he's got an Ohio Roti t-shirt on, and I said, and we literally just said, well, this is the place where people from restaurants are gonna live, and I, I went over and approached him, and we, we had about a ten-minute chat, he's the one I referred to earlier, um, and, uh, he was very happy there. Um, but I think the thing that really struck me, and this is my second visit, I, I visited that property some, oh, probably five, ten years ago, um, was the open center to it, and so reading the Historic Preservation Commission's response to that was really, that's the essence, that's the historic essence, is these cottages, you know, around a, a circle of lawn, and, and not all at ri- rectilinear to a layout, but it's sort of dappled in the, in the, uh, landscape, and so I know there's a trade-off between, um, two-story and not. Um, and I don't know, because I don't know the adjacencies to the other houses outside there. But if there, if you could take the four units in the center out and put them on a two-story uh, footprint, but around the perimeter in someplace that doesn't affect the people who are living next door. Um, it would seem to me that, that restoring the o- the oval lawn in the center is really the essence of historic preservation, and I don't know if that's been part of your back-and-forth with your, with your partner in this, uh, in this event, in this, in this project, rather.
Yeah, well, the, the layout, it's definitely been, you know, a consideration um, between doing two-story
Right.
and, um, and also the prefabs too. Um, you know, we heard from a lot of people about the two-story concept, and a lot of people were not fans of it. So, uh, but, yeah, I mean, you, there is some, some, uh, I, we would agree with you, you know, if we, we did some two-stories in certain areas, then maybe we could play with that middle area.
Okay.
But we only have what we have, you know?
Yeah, alright, it's a zero-sum game.
Hand there.
Yeah.
It's a zero-sum game.
So it's a little, little tricky.
Um, the, the thing that when we, when I studied the plans, and the, the new u- units being proposed are the dimensions of mobile homes, whereas the original ones are square, the, the others are, are, um, uh, long and thin, so they can go under bridges and on the highway and things like that for delivery.
Right.
Um, and, uh, I was sort of taken aback, and I thought, gee, do, do we really want anything that resembles a mobile home park in a s- in a community around it, which is, has a lot of single-family dwellings and sm- and small square bungalows, as opposed to, um, you know, a lineup of, of places? And then when I got to the part of the description, and I realized they were metal-cladded buildings, I was thinking, ah. Now, I realized that, again, for historic purposes, you're supposed to differentiate the new from the old, so people can walk in and understand what they're looking at. Um, but you could do that with a different, you know, you could do that with a, a board and batten structure, vertical board and batten structure, as opposed to what the, or the, what they have there now, in terms of the cladding, and I suppose if you're gonna, if you're gonna have to stick with, um, uh, pre-manufactured housing that gets, you know, dropped in the site, that you are going to be stuck with the dimensions you've got there, as opposed to the square dimensions, which are quite aesthetically pleasing, that are currently, they're currently there. I, I don't know if you got a comment on that, or, uh, why did you choose metal cladding as opposed to, uh, uh, wood or, or, um?
Having seen them in person at the factory, they, they do have other options, um, you know, wood, style siding.
Yeah.
There are other alternatives, uh, the metal cladding is actually a step up, by the way, in cost. So that would kind of, you know, it would kind of revert back to my comment, I'd love to have you guys see an actual one.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and maybe that's something we can arrange. So you see one of the metal versions.
And we'd definitely love to do a site visit.
Yeah, these are not, uh, mobile homes, I'll just be clear about that, these are, these are built, these are built in a factory elevated, but yes, they are sized, so they can be moved, they can be transferred.
Alright, I, I, the, the addition of porches and trellises really helped that a lot, I mean, differentiating them from that, but, uh, the ones that are lined up on the paper street
Yeah.
um, are lined up, and
Yeah.
whereas the others, I, are, the originals are quite pleasantly sprinkled in the landscape, so I don't know if there's anything that can be done to relea- relieve that, but I realize you, in that narrow space, the fifty-foot space, you've got so, you know, you've got neighbors on both sides of the fifty-foot width, so, uh, and I don't, this, since these maps would be improved, had they included wh- what the neighbors, what the, even if it was just, you know, a reference piece around it, showing what the buildings around it, the existing buildings around it, the neighbors, you know, so, so one could see that. I think I, um, you know, I uh, i- it's, the amount of work that's gone into this project to this day, it is really astounding, um, and, uh, I, I don't wanna be harassing you with any more, uh, uh, limitations, but I, I share my colleagues' concern about parking, and would love to see any ameliorating, um, ways in which that could be dealt with, so.
Is, is there space, um, on the paper road trail? For those seven units, is there space between the units and the border to put a hedge? To mask that at all?
Oh, along the neighbor, the west side.
Lucas, do you wanna pull that up real quick?
Oh.
Just so we're all kind of on the same page.
May I just ask also, Steph, if you could put a compass rose on each one of these, so that we know what orientation everything is, cause it, it is disorienting. Well, there is one, there, there is one on this, but there's not one on this, you know, so you, you look at one, that one's got it.
Well, it's this, okay, go ahead.
Oh, there's not one here, I'm telling you.
There we go.
Okay, at the bottom.
Bottom, that bottom border there.
Those, those seven, uh, new bungalows look like they're very close to the edge of your property line. It, it, how much space is there, and would there be room to put a hedge?
Uh, I, I'd probably defer that to Bill Mellett. Come weigh in on that? Are you allowed to plant hedges?
Come on up, Bill.
Thank you, I'm Bill Mellett, I'm the landscape architect and arborist on this project.
Good, awesome.
So, I can answer any questions. Myself and our staff developed most of the site work.
Is there room for hedge? That's the question.
Yes, there probably is room for an edge, but, let me say, Ventura County fire standards now are very strict.
Yep.
About.
Yeah, you gotta be five feet away, right, so? From the building.
But out another, to the thirty-foot line, there's spacing requirements for plants, which would preclude
A full hedge.
within that space, so.
You're right.
It's become very difficult on small sites now to put plant material.
What about a, a fence or fencing?
So it could have a fence.
Okay, you could have fencing.
You could have a, a wood fence is, or
Or a rock wall.
I mean, a six-foot fence that would give you privacy, and this is not a front of property, so.
It's considered side.
There's a.
There's already an existing, um, chain-link fence there, currently.
Yes.
Oh, it'd be really nice to, to upgrade that to a six-foot wood fence for privacy.
Maybe a, some sort of, uh, stucco wall for sound.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. So, I've got.
The, the, the units really look like they're right on top of that walking trail. Those same seven units now, I'm looking at their front doors, and it does appear that they are absolutely on top of the walking trail, is that accurate?
There's a lot of constraints on this site, that, you know, when you're designing, there's best-case scenarios, and then you start filling in all the constraints that overlay. There's trees, protected trees
Mm-hmm.
that we have to be aware of, and trying to stay out of their protected zone, the critical root zone. Um, there's access issues to them, and providing pathways connecting to the parking. We spent a lot of time on the road layout and parking here, trying to maximize the number of spaces. And it is really tight to get any more spaces, we actually just, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, we're trying to add more spaces, and.
Is, is the space between? Is the space between those seven bungalows and the roadway where the fire truck would be, is that within their required hose length?
Two-hundred-and-fifty feet to the farthest.
Okay.
Unit there. You know, we're trying to provide private spaces for each unit, and then there's public spaces that those units address. And we didn't want to run a straight path through, so we did try to keep the pathways, as you can see, very natural and kind of sweeping through the site as they are now. And that goes with the spacing of the units also. There's very few that got lined up. Only where that happened was we were really constrained with space for parking space, road width, turning radiuses for fire access. These are all things that really drive design.
If I may, if there wasn't the public pathway, you know, right above these seven units, how else would the residents get to their unit?
Well, that's part of how they get to their unit, is on that public trail.
Correct. So, what would be the alternative if there wasn't that public pathway there?
We'd probably put, we could have squeezed more parking in there, probably.
So, those seven units wouldn't exist if there wasn't this right-of-way, essentially, this public path for them to get to their unit?
Yes, I would say.
I'm trying to help you out a little bit, right? Because there's no way on that area behind it, below this map, for them to be able to, you know, get to those units.
I mean, you know, there is something about sometimes, you know, houses that do face public things, there's that interaction that happens, which is, actually can be good for communities. Instead of, you know, let's say we took that public pathway and pushed it to the property line and fenced it on two sides and just gave you a public access through there. Does that benefit the people on that path or the homeowners? I think it's nicer to have it in the front.
Yeah, my perspective here is, it's not just those seven units, it's actually pretty much all of the units. You're either going to have to have a car parking in front of your house and people walking past that, or they're going to have to be walking down this, you know, public pathway or one of these different pathways that are there. So, I'm really curious, as we talk about the watershed, you know, the watershed here is, there's two issues. The first is like, hey, this creek or this drainage area, right? How is water going to actually get to it, flow through? How do we make sure we're not going to flood this community? The second piece is, you know, you're putting in a lot of concrete, you're putting in a lot of new surface structures. What type of permeable structures are you going to be putting in? What materials are you going to be using?
So, we're in preliminary stage, but we're anticipating the parking spaces to be permeable.
Oh, good.
The main road would be impervious, but the parking spaces would all be permeable.
And the walkways?
And the walkways would be, some would be permeable, and some, because of ADA access, have to be non-permeable. Wherever we can, we're thinking DG pathway, gravel pathway.
Right.
But some have to be ADA accessible.
When we talked before about whether you can be on a slab, Jeff, you mentioned that there were stem cell and several other possibilities. Would any of them allow for water seepage down into the aquifer? I mean, it sounds like the slab would not, the stem, stem wall would not, but would the others that you mentioned?
All of the anchoring systems that they provided are all elevated. So, these are craned in, by the way, and that's one of the reasons that we were initially looking at the prefabs, because stick frame, I mean, some neighbors aren't happy now. Can you imagine with the construction that would go on with stick framing? So, we thought, okay, this is a little bit of a savings as far as noise and those impacts. But they're all elevated a bit, and the anchoring systems are, the one that they just put in Santa Barbara is about 18 inches off the ground. So, the gray beam system, there's like six, a series of six gray beams, or you have the stem wall, which is also, you know, that's elevated also.
And so, underneath, it'd still be permeable land?
Yeah.
Great, all right.
Yeah, I could also say with the grading, we've tried to maintain the topography as much as possible. Obviously, when you have roads and stuff, we have to grade for those. But the houses themselves, on the pads that they're sitting, well, we're not grading pads. That's one thing with this particular design. The houses are set on the landscape, and we've been able to, we moved two units in the upper right there, we had them on the other side of the Swale or Creek, but that was going to cause some additional grading to be necessary, so we've moved them to this side. And our intention is that the creek, it is an amenity for this project in this site. So, we intend to keep that as natural as possible in size to accommodate the necessary drainage on this site, which I believe when cottages in this were proposed, that grading was addressed so that downstream, they have the capacity to hold the water that'll come off this site when it's developed. That's more on the civil engineering side, but I know, I've read the reports and stuff.
We've already completed the ball pad at the top end of the cottages site, which is right here where the trail connects, noted. That's all been completed in phase one already.
Okay.
Which Public Works has spent out there numerous times.
May I just ask some questions about drainage? One is, is it a blue-line stream?
No.
It's not a blue-line stream. And when it gets through the cottages and the flowers, where does it go? Does it go underground on the other side of Aliso? Is that?
It's under Aliso.
It's under Aliso.
It's exposed after, after Aliso.
Will you talk on the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, Sherry.
Thank you.
It goes under Aliso, and then I think that for different periods of time, it's exposed, and then I think it actually goes under what would be Matilla, I guess?
Yeah, and it comes out right behind the new restaurant.
Oh, I got you.
We're talking on the microphone.
Yeah.
Comes out just after the parking lot of the new restaurant that just opened next to the liquor store. It was Carols.
Yeah, Carols, yeah.
Jeff, you kind of eliminated the extension of the paper road of Mallory, and I'm wondering if you could consider putting parking there.
Putting what in there?
Parking.
Yeah. If you go two stories all over the place, you know.
Clarify what you're talking, are you talking about parking on the west side, which would be the bottom portion of what we're talking about here? Or further to the north?
Further north. You had a slide in which the, where those seven bungalows are, that paper road continued north, correct?
Yes, it does.
And that's the piece of land I'm talking about. Can you, could we put that back into the plan and use some parking there?
Well, I could speak to that. I could speak to that. Just because of.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe.
Could you tell us why?
What was the width of that space, 58 feet?
The width of the paper shirt is 52 feet.
Fifty-two feet. Twenty foot for a parking space, 25 for the drive aisles.
Angled, angled in?
So, that's 45. Well, if it's angled, then you have to have a way out. You'd have to go one way, we'd have to come all the way around. We kind of looked at that, it's.
Didn't, didn't work, okay. Well, I'm just looking for parking.
In parallel, you'd have to back out. You can't back out.
Yeah.
The concern that I would have with that is there's also the existing walking trail that.
Is it on that same property?
It is, yes.
All right, well, I thought.
Quickly, I just wanted to talk about the trees. So, you're planning, you're planning on removing 31 trees, is that correct, out of 119?
So, there's 88 trees currently on the site.
Okay.
We've gone out and done a recent.
Okay.
Town. There's 88 trees on the site. Twenty-one of those trees are encroached upon, meaning impacted by the design.
Right.
Four of those are impacted less than 1%, so there are minimal impact to them. You know, the location of the proposed units and pathways and grading have all taken into account the trees as much as possible. Thirty-three, 31 trees are proposed for removal. Of those, only one is a protected oak tree.
Okay, okay.
So, there's numerous other species of trees on that property, most of them not in very good condition.
Right.
Some invasive tree species that we're removing. So, there's 10 eucalyptus that we're proposing to remove, which are considered invasive species in California.
Not good for fire.
Yeah. There's eight Washingtonia palms, again, recommended for removal by fire. Two peppers. And in our landscape design, we're proposing 31 new native trees planted, probably oaks.
So, you're going to plant 31 new oak trees?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
How big would they be?
Yeah, where would you put those?
They're on our landscape plan already, but we haven't created a mitigation plan, but they're in our preliminary landscape plan.
Okay, okay.
And what size would they be? Haven't got there yet, but generally 24-inch box or above, maybe.
What kind of irrigation would that require?
So, almost all drip irrigation. There's no proposed lawn areas, per se, in here yet. There may be some smaller ground cover areas, but 95% at least drip irrigation nowadays.
Okay.
And we do have to, we ask this of all our applicants, but with fire-hardening landscaping, have you looked to fire mitigation best practices for the plants and the trees?
We're very familiar with that.
Okay, good, all right. Just making sure.
Yeah.
We have to ask everybody.
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay.
Think of them later, but.
We might, we might have a couple more.
We have another bite at this apple, right?
We might, yeah. But thank you, guys, we appreciate it, thank you so much. I have some questions for staff. Do you guys have some additional questions for staff?
Go for it.
Okay. So, I think you addressed one of mine, which was the environmental impacts, the engineering site assessment. You said that's in the process. I did want to talk about the stop sign at Aliso, because we will be impacting these neighborhoods with more cars, and Aliso is fast. I've been down that road many times, people do fly down that road.
You're the one they're complaining about.
I might be, I might be, I might be. But what is, what's the appetite or what is the ability to do that?
Staff can look into that. I don't know what the thresholds are at this point for.
Is that a city decision, or does?
It's in the public right-of-way, so it would be something we'd be working with Public Works with.
Okay. And I also do like the idea of putting the red curb in front of the mailboxes, because you will have parking on those streets, and, you know, it's going to impact that neighborhood. So, anything we can do to help mitigate the impacts to the neighborhoods, I think is going to be great. Again, I'd like, I'd like staff to work with the applicant on that fire safety with that paper trail is just, that is very concerning. I just don't know how those people are going to get out if there's a fire, you know what I mean?
Certainly, we can look into that.
Yeah, that'd be great. What else? Okay, so we talked about, oh, is this, is that paper trail deemed a wildlife corridor today, or do we know?
There's no information that identifies as a designated wildlife corridor.
Yeah.
I know, obviously, the community sees wildlife going in and out of there, but it hasn't been, hasn't been deemed in that, in that category, so.
I see coyotes on my street all the time, it's not a wildlife corridor.
You're right.
Okay. All right, and we have, let's see, what else for staff? Stop sign, I got that. Oh, one thing I would like to see staff pursue as this project continues to move forward is more public outreach, more updates on the project, project timelines, completion, you know, when things are going to get excavated. I would just like to see more transparency there, so the public's well aware of what's happening with this project.
Duly noted.
Okay. Let's see.
Where is the bungalow, the new bungalow company located? Sanoya or something like that, you said?
Yeah, it's Samara.
Samara.
They're based out of the Bay Area. Their factory is in Mexicali.
Oh, we could have a field trip.
Yeah.
Zoom in.
Zoom in.
I wouldn't go during the summer.
Yeah, obviously, we, you know, we want to make sure it kind of fits in with the context and continuity of the neighborhood. I know that's going to be difficult with these types of buildings, but, you know, anything we can do to kind of help see what might be coming would be great.
What that's like, yeah.
Yeah. I did have one quick question on parking, and I apologize. This goes back to kind of the designated parking idea. Have you guys looked into that, like designated parking for each unit and maybe like a couple guest spots?
We haven't looked into doing that, but, you know, we did take some notes on it from today's conversation, so it may be that we need to designate for each unit.
Yeah, that'd be nice. I've seen that done in other affordable housing projects, and it works pretty good.
Yeah, we've done it in a few of our places in Ventura as well. So, it works pretty good. But you could look, you know, independently at the Samara website, which is just the www.smar.com, and then I can provide to Lucas the location in Westlake where there's an actual unit. So, if you guys are in the area, you could drop by and take a look at it.
Yeah, okay.
And I'd be happy to meet you there as well, if needed.
Okay, thank you for that.
Chairman, I've got just a couple of quick questions that are like that. Are you going to have any provision for storage for the residents? You know, as these units are very small, you don't want everything piled up in the porch or on the trellis area, you don't want to keep. We dealt with this issue when we were dealing with the village as an important one to retain the feeling of it being a village.
Right. Yeah, one of the reasons we came up with the screen porch sort of addition to the rear of the existing cottages to give them a little space, because they are small, as you said. And the new units, the Samara units, have some closet space, that kind of thing on the inside. But we don't, we don't have any outside storage at present, separate storage.
Another quick question about bicycles. Are you going to have bicycle charging there? Because I really, I think units this size and at this price point, they are going to attract people, like the guy from Ojai Roti who I ran into, and, you know, the bicycle to work.
Very close to downtown.
So, very close. So, and I'm seeing more and more of those. Besides 13-year-old boys, there are other people who do ride these electric bikes. So, I think having, having something that accommodates people's need for that, whether it's per unit or in a cluster, I don't know, but having charging stations for those bicycles is important.
Duly noted.
Yeah, perfect.
Is there an electrical outlet on the outside of each of these units?
Is that a?
An electrical outlet on the outside?
There are, yeah. Yeah, and these have on-demand, one of the things you do on-demand water heaters, and of course, split units, on the HVAC side.
And I apologize, I'm going to go back to this one more. If you decided to open up that middle space and remove those four units there, where would you potentially put two stories to make up for the difference? Or have you thought about that? Just curious.
I was going to ask you guys that.
Good question, good question.
I thought I read something about on the perimeter. Maybe it was the triple unit.
Yeah, might need to be at the east side there with the, with the three units, or maybe on the south side.
Yeah, I was thinking the south. Yeah, I was thinking the south side.
Would, are there neighbors in close proximity to either of those?
Yes, there are, on both of them.
So it's a...
It's a give or take.
It's, yeah, it's a tough question.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Any chance that, and I don't know what the Historic Preservation Commission thought of this, but leaving the historic signage, I realize it's not the original signage, but it is sort of an interim signage of the reference to Troy, I think, in the, in the development. Could, could that stuff be left there, because it really adds to the, you know, the adaption of, over time, of the, of the development to its original use?
We, we hadn't really considered that, because it wasn't part of the original historic. Troy Lodge was put up there by one of the former owners who went to USC and was a number-one USC fan. So he put that up there with his partner. So, but we hadn't really contemplated that.
Yeah. Those, those three units that are down there on the bottom, on the far right, on the south side, could those be a second story? Because it's kind of in the middle, almost, away from neighbors.
You're talking about...
No, not there? No, okay, well, guess there goes that.
Got an answer, quickly.
There you go, there you go.
That's tough, that's tough. Okay, well, maybe there's other options that, you know, folks, folks can look at. Alright.
Thank you.
Oh.
Just one last one, sorry. If those four units in the, the center are removed, and you put in, you know, grass, a park area, whatever it is, is there a way to cram more parking spaces around that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's some parking on both sides of that central area at present.
Keyword was more.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think so.
That's a thought.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, anything else for staff?
Oh, yeah, there would definitely be a lot more.
Yeah, should open it up. Could, could you guys potentially look at maybe an A/B kind of mock-up, so to speak? Something like that, if we did, took out those four units in the middle and added like a little more parking and did a double somewhere else?
You're talking about when this comes back?
Yeah.
When this returns?
Like an A/B analysis.
Typically, we try to stay away from the A/B option, because then it potentially becomes a split vote.
True.
But I think we can talk offline in terms of kinda best practices, given the input we've seen tonight.
I mean, if it's possible, I mean, obviously, it's, you know, there's a lot of constraints on this property as far as, you know, what density is allowed and what the neighbor, neighborhood could support and will support, so I totally get it, okay, alright.
Was there parking around the court in the original historical scenario?
You, you mean around the motor court?
Yes.
Along the edges?
Along, so it's always been a parking lot to a degree?
On the, yeah, on the west, on the north, east, yeah, all surrounding it.
Yes.
And it did have a pool, which is really cool.
Right, right.
Yeah, kinda centrally to the south, yeah.
Yeah, I know that's probably not...
Now you're dreaming.
I know, I know.
You and Bill.
Bring back the pool. Okay, any other questions for staff? Oh, I did have one, sorry, one more. Sorry, I apologize. Permit parking on the Mallory Way, on Mallory Street, something like that, could that be looked at? Can we explore that option?
That's a city street, how can you...
How do we enforce it? We're not already enforcing.
Well, you got code enforcement, right?
Code enforcement is not parking enforcement for, for that matter. Yeah, that would be PD slash Public Works that we'd be working with on, on that, and that obviously would require City Council termination.
Okay, to get some sort of permit parking there, okay.
Yes, I can bring back, if, if you like, in the staff report, I can bring back that process.
That would be good, I think the neighborhood would appreciate it.
Maybe we include that in our bigger parking discussion with City Council later.
Oh, yeah.
Here's an exact, an area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Me too.
Okay, alright, well, I think with no other questions, share, well, I guess we don't have anything else online, so I think we'll move on. Okay, so with, I guess with no action being taken on this, next steps is, if you wanna outline what's, what's happening next?
So what you'll see is a publicly noticed item once, once this project has come back, and then a resolution to go along with that.
And this is going to be soon, right? I think I read six months after, from April one.
To act, and that's not the planning commission acting on it, that's it going to City Council for their, their action.
So it's gonna be back soon?
It's gonna be back soon, sooner than later, most certainly.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you guys, thank you so much. Alright, we'll move on to item number three. This is a public hearing item. I guess we can give it a minute or two to let folks clear out.
Could we, could we take a five-minute, could we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, five-minute break, sounds good.
And this is just a little, little map, just to show you some, the en- environmental context around the site. I already said what the address is, the zoning is general commercial, general plan, also general commercial, and the surrounding uses, we have single-family residential to the south and more retail to the west. And just a little context on the site and just the happenings at the moment. If you guys are not aware, Vons is currently undergoing a, a major remodel, and so this sign proposal is essentially a emblem of the modern, of the store's modernization efforts. And to note, there is a sign program on this site that was enacted on November of nineteen eighty-six. However, the sign program does not include the Vons store. As you can see, the store is pictured to the left, all of those stores have signs that are in conformance with the enacted sign program. As the Vons sign is slightly wider than the limitation set forth through that sign program. And, let's see, so this is what's existing now, and you can see the primary Vons wordmark sign and the secondary logo, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that is outdated branding, and so that is gonna be replaced. And also the goose-neck external illumination lamps, those are also going to be removed as the new signs will be halo-lit, illuminated. And so here are the dimensions of, of the new proposed signs, you can see the primary wordmark sign and the secondary logo sign. So to note, the existing Vons sign is approximately twenty-seven and a half square feet in area, so this is actually gonna be slightly smaller at approximately twenty-four square feet in area. And there's and also to note, internally illuminated signs are prohibited pursuant to our codes sign standards, which you guys have attached for reference. So these signs will be halo-lit, illuminated, which essentially means backlit. So the LEDs, here, watch here, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that later. Anyway, so these signs are, are gonna be positioned in the same location as the existing primary wordmark sign and the secondary logo sign, and there's the elevation at the bottom, just for context. And as I was saying before, no internally illuminated signs are are allowed pursuant to our sign standards. And so these signs are gonna be halo-lit, illuminated, you can see how the LEDs are oriented. So if you're following my cursor, there they are there, and you can see them right here on the backside of, of the sign, about five inches deep. And per this rendering right here, it will splash backward, and the sign will be illuminated inadvertently through that through that casted light behind. And the, the surface, the face of the signs will be a opaque aluminum, and so no light will be, will be beckoned through the face of the sign, which is consistent with our sign standards. And the same goes for the drive-up-and-go secondary logo. And as you can see, that one, the specs are detailed to the right where my cursor is, the little car logo and the circle perimeter, they will be raised out about an inch from a, from a vinyl, from a red vinyl satin-finished circle. And the, the car logo and the perimeter circle will also be an opaque aluminum, except it'll be colored white to contrast on top of the cardinal red, which max, which matches the color of the primary sign, which is also cardinal red. And just for reference, that sign pictured in the, in a Vons location in San Diego is the exact sign that will be installed at our location, or at least that is proposed to be installed. However, the drive-up-and-go wordmark is gonna be much smaller, it's gonna be the same width as the circular sign, which is three feet by three feet respectively, or three feet in diameter, rather. And as you may be wondering, oh, where are other halo-lit signs around the community? Well, both of these signs went to Planning Commission, nine thirty-
And I anticipate, as a senior, when it's raining, senior folks won't have any place to go, but they could go to Vons and they could do their walks all the way around, like, almost a mile. In fact, people were getting lost when it first happened. Anyway, I like it a lot. I do not understand why there's a sign showing a vehicle. Does that mean you can pull your car up in that area and get the staff to bring your groceries out? Is that what it is?
I think that, well, we can ask the applicant, but I believe that's the case.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, it's great to see Vons thriving in Ojai. I like it a lot.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Did you wanna bring up the applicant, or do you wanna, you guys have questions for staff?
Sure, let's bring up the...
Okay, come, if you're an applicant, come on up.
Let him answer Bill's question about the drive-up.
Yeah, just had a question about the drive-up sign.
Sure.
Yeah, what the purpose is.
Let me introduce myself.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Jason Groundlick. I'm real estate manager for Albertson's Vons Pavilion, Southern California Division.
Awesome, thank you. So the question was about the, the parking sign with the little car on it, what the purpose of that might be.
So that signifies our drive-up-and-go program. It is where customers can place their orders online, and then they go to a designated parking space, and our shoppers will bring out their orders to the car. And we chose to put it on that side of the building because that is where those parking spaces are designated.
Okay.
Is that different from where they are now?
Yes, they will be moving over a couple of...
So they'll be moved over, okay. And those parking places will be only for pre-orders?
So they are still general parking spaces. I can't tell someone you can't park there, but those are designated that if you do pull in there, that's where you can come pick up your groceries.
And they'll bring them to you?
Correct, yep. I know how tight the parking, the parking is at that shopping center. People can still park in them, we prefer them not to, but, but if you are picking up your order, that's where you'll need to go.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you so much. We might have a couple more, you never know.
Don't leave.
Yeah, don't leave. I do have a couple of questions for staff, but I'll let you guys go first. No?
I thought it was a very thorough report.
Yeah, it was good.
And I have no questions.
I just have a couple of questions, Brian. I noticed that the, the little car, that one is not, is that not backlit?
It is also backlit, yes. So the LEDs are behind the car logo and behind the perimeter circle, as they're both raised an inch from the, the red vinyl base. Does that make sense? And the light splashes on the, the red vinyl circle foundation behind the logo.
Okay, so the little, the little white, the little white car is not gonna be shining out, it's gonna be back?
No, no, no. So that also has a opaque aluminum face, just like the primary wordmark sign.
Got it, okay.
What you're saying is there's no translucent?
No, there's no, yeah, there's no, no transparency through the face of the thing, yeah.
And then, another question, this has just come up in other sign discussions. Is some of the light escaping from the sides? And I know that when you get farther away from the building, you're gonna have more light escaping. How close is the sign to the, to the light? Like, is it, I think you mentioned five inches, but then you said one inch.
Yeah, so the secondary sign is, so that logo is raised one inch, and you can see in these specs right here, the lights raised one inch from this circular base right here. And then...
But against the...
But with the letters, yeah, you're right. It is, it is five inches behind the face of the sign.
Okay, so, so the wall's here, five inches out, there's the sign, light's going backwards.
Or, no, sorry, it's actually on the inside.
Well, you did, say this and five inches.
Yeah, yeah. John, John, so if you, if you look at this side view, you can see the left side is the front of the sign. The LEDs are not attached to the front, going five deep. It's actually on the inside, just splashing right on the adjacent wall of the structure. You see that?
So I'm, sorry, I'm confused. So how far is that distance from the wall?
It says one and a half inches.
Oh, so it's only an inch?
Yeah.
Oh, so I see, the sign itself is five inches.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so the, the letter itself is like a block letter, five inches.
Okay, all right, that's cool, I like that. Yeah, and then the other one is an inch too, I'm assuming, from the wall. Okay, all right. Yeah, that was, that was basically my, my questions on that one. And it's gonna be smaller, you said, in dimension than the current sign?
Yes, it is, yeah. So the sign that was initially approved in sign permit ninety-six oh four, it is twenty-seven point, about twenty-seven point five square inches, yeah. So it will be slightly smaller.
Okay, and it's gonna close at ten, so it shuts off automatically. And there's a dimmer. Does the dimmer come on at certain times, or?
I'll invite the applicant.
Sorry, you guys don't mind.
Expond upon that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How you doing, sir?
My name's Tim Pitts, I represent Vons Grocery Company. And each sign will have a rheostat that can be adjusted. And once it's set, it's set.
Right.
The manager or a maintenance person can go in and always adjust it for brightness or less brightness.
Oh, I see, okay, so that's the dimmer.
And the typical, the closer you get to the wall, the sharper the image.
Yes, yes.
And we always like it so that it's sharp and clean and not fuzzy.
One hundred percent.
So we wanna be able to...
Yeah, and it's also less light intrusion from the rest of, yeah.
Yeah, so inch and a half is typical.
Yeah, okay.
What we're gonna do. So it'll look real clean. And the reason for the square foot difference is Vons changed their logo over the years, and it squeezed a little bit. So the, the new logo is, is just a little less square foot, that's all.
No, I do have one more question. So when it does rain and seniors wanna come in, can they do laps in your, inside your store?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Absolutely.
That's good, that's good to know.
Maybe they can have some races.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
I have a, I have a question. How, how was the, the ten candle power illumination derived? Is that a, is that a city ordinance?
The LED manufacturer provides us, the city has a certain distance from the sign itself is when it's measured. And I think it was like a hundred feet or something is what, what it was.
I mean, I wanna be able to see it if I'm driving down the thirty-three, or at thirty-three one fifty from there, look over and see it illuminated. I think this is actually an improvement to have some good illumination on the, on the sign.
Yeah, and I, I think once the sign is up, it can be adjusted. You know, the manager can, you know, some of you folks can go over there and say, hey, I don't think it's bright enough. Let's tweak it a little bit. But, but it, but it can be adjusted, so whichever, we're gonna have them both set the same so that if, if it's an issue, if it's too bright, it's just like, just like a rheostat you have in your house. For LEDs, you can raise it or lower it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, so we actually have that as a condition in our condition of approval. The thirty days after, the director may require dimming of the sign if the, if it doesn't meet our ten candle power threshold, which actually, correction, is from the, from the face of, of the sign.
From the face of the sign.
From the face of the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess it'd be measured from the, from the front of, of the, of the actual logo, of the actual wordmark.
And since nothing lights up, the, both signs are manufactured, fabricated aluminum. So it's, the, the drive-up-and-go is painted to match the vinyl color. There's a specific vinyl color that we use for that, so it's just painted to match that. So it's, it's all aluminum, the whole thing, it's supposed.
Okay.
All right?
Awesome. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Uh, yes, sir.
Is the background gonna be black?
I don't thi, I think it's gonna be the wall of the building, whatever the building color is.
Yeah, that's just supposed to be the night rendering, which is why it looks black, yeah.
Yeah.
The color of the building.
I hope... No, very good to ask.
Can't hear any comments from this audience.
You're making Sherry mad, though.
I'm sorry, Sherry, sorry. Bill, do you wanna come up and just say your question real quick? Sorry, just, just for, just for the, for the record, Sherry will be very happy, or she will scold us.
Bill Miley, I had a question as to whether the background of the sign as shown on the TV here is gonna be black, and the answer is no.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Awesome. Okay, any other questions?
I have no questions. If we have no discussion, I'm happy to make a motion.
All right.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All right, Sherry, let's get a roll call.
Graham.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Trent.
Yes. All right, passes. All right, let's move on. Thank you, guys. Okay, what else do we got up here? Uh, future agenda items.
I see a blank page.
Oh, I see a city council person.
We do have a city council person, we're not quite there yet, we're getting close.
For seven fifteen East Ojai, Atta Gate and Smoker, what's currently at seven fifteen East Ojai?
Atta Gate and Smoker, isn't that interesting?
Kind of excited for that discussion.
It's a, it's a, it's a restaurant. Why am I remembering that, I don't remember the name of the restaurant, but it's on the south side of Ojai Avenue.
Casa de Lagos.
Casa de Lagos, thank you.
Oh, are they putting a new re...
Yeah.
Isn't Casa de La, oh, no, Casa de Lagos is not in Ojai anymore. They moved out.
Well, yeah, it's a new restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Oh, the old Casa de Lagos.
Old Casa de Lagos.
Got it, got it.
Okay, so we've moved on.
Yes, we have.
Future items, yes.
Yes, we have moved on to future items, yes.
So I don't have or see anything planned for June fourth. And I turn to this body to see if there's anything that you would like to schedule that is not, won't be any public hearings.
Discussion items?
And discussion items that you want to, to bring forward. If not, then my recommendation would be to cancel.
What do you guys think?
I don't have discussion items, but...
I don't have any strong discussion items that I can think of. I mean, I think we're gonna address a lot of our big pieces with council at the joint meeting.
Joint meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm comfortable with punting those to the joint meeting.
Do you need a motion to cancel?
I would.
Second.
That was fast. All right, so we got a motion, we got a second, Sherry, roll call.
Was the second Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, so Graham?
Aye.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. Okay, any other discussion on agenda items, future agenda items?
We are, okay, so just so you know, the, the joint meeting with city council, I believe we're getting close on a hard date. So when that happens, I will let you know as a body.
Perfect.
When that's in schedule.
Thank you. That's it.
And then the rest of the items that are pending, like I say always, we're working on, on getting them to complete, but if they're not complete, we're not bringing them forward.
Got it, okay, perfect. All right, and now we'll move on to director's report. Back to you, Lucas.
Nothing, nothing to report out at this point.
All right, good deal. Any commission member reports? I know we had a, the MAC was canceled.
Oh, yeah, MAC was canceled recently.
Okay. Now finally, our city council liaison, Mr. Whitman.
Oh, and he gets to wait for the very end.
Very end.
It's fitting. I'll say what I say every time I get up here, which is thank you. It is a big deal that you give up your time. And also thank you because your discussion is really intelligent.
Thank you.
It's, it's very apparent that you're, you know, digging into the issues, you know, why is this a requirement of this project? And you should be exploring those issues as you just, you know.
Yeah, we got a good body.
You do have, you have a, you have a good body, and I think the public should feel confident that you guys are thinking through everything that's coming.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So, thanks.
Awesome, thank you so much. All right, guys, well, with that, we will officially call the meeting adjourned at eight twenty.